Hi, I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome you all to the May School Board Meeting and ask for approval of the agenda.
So motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Larson will give the invocation and Mrs. Schultz will lead us in the pledge.
Pledge first, right?
Yep.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father and Him, we're grateful to be here this evening. We're grateful most for the people that work in our district and for the success of our children. We ask for a blessing upon the administration and staff, all those who work in the daily functioning of our district. And we are grateful for them and for their efforts. We are grateful for the children and ask for blessing upon them that they might be able to navigate the challenges that they have in their daily lives and that they might find success and find happiness in what they do. And we would ask that that would help us this evening as we go through this meeting and make decisions that we might do so with guidance and help and be able to do the things that are best for all. And we ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Item 3.2, action to approve mutual agreement between district and superintendent, ending employment relationship effective June 30th, 2022.
I move to approve the mutual agreement between the district and superintendent as presented to the governing board tonight, by which Mr. Housley will fulfill the remainder of his 2021-2022 contract with the district, but will no longer be employed by the district effective July 1st, 2022.
I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I need you guys to sign this while I read the statement.
And I actually had a statement that I just wanted to say we appreciate.
Kelly, can I read our statement first as a board?
Oh, I am so sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Our district has appreciated Mr. Housley's leadership and work for the district during the past six years. However, in recent weeks, Mr. Housley and the board have been engaged in positive and collaborative discussions about the coming year. By agreement, the parties have decided to change course. To that end, the agreement that was just approved reflects the agreement of Mr. Housley and the board that he will complete his current term as superintendent, but will not be under contract with the district for the '22-'23 fiscal year. We appreciate Mr. Housley's willingness to dedicate the next eight weeks to ensuring that our staff and our students remain focused on year-end activities and that the district and site leadership are in the best position possible as we make this transition. Excuse me. Please be assured that the board will be working diligently to identify the qualified and experienced individual to assume the responsibilities of interim superintendent while we work in collaboration with our community to initiate a search for a new superintendent. We will keep our community informed along the way. We are very mindful that over the next two months and thereafter, the district must continue to address district finances and the recent audit report. We will do so and schedule a time on future agenda items for reports to the board on the audit and related matters to keep the public informed. Again, we thank Mr. Housley for being our district superintendent and look forward to making sure that the final months of school year are best for students and staff are both positive and productive, and the final two months of Mr. Housley's time with us is equally so.
Item 3.5, call to the audience.
3.3.
3.3. Oh, I'm sorry. Approval of eighth grade promotion. Mrs. Clark, is she here?
Good evening. This isn't actually an approval. Ms. Gibbs and I were emailing this afternoon. It's just to inform you on the process we went through to arrive at this year's festivities, I think, in the post-COVID era. And given the size of our classes now, we've had to make some modifications to past traditions, but we still want to celebrate the students and have them be celebrated by as many family and friends as participate. So the memo you have outlines the festivities for the students. We also want to invite you all to come if you're able. Probably maybe Mr. Clark would want to shop around the dance. I don't know if that would be approved by your child, but I think we just have some fun things planned for the kids. Most importantly is the reception on Thursday. I think we've reached a mutual agreement with students, our eighth grade teachers and staff, and our site council. Yeah, so we've all had time to weigh in. So that's, it's just informational really for you all and a formal invitation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3.4, superintendent report. Mr. Housley?
I'm going to ask Mrs. Clark to stay here. Bentley, I'm going to come on up. You can bring your dad if you want to. She's good.
Mrs. Didering's going to join us also.
Awesome.
We feel a joint ownership at school. So last month, Mr. Housley talked about Bentley was nominated for the School Connect Student Champion of the Year, grade seven through 12, for 2022. We attended a reception on April 28th, her parents and Bentley, and they invited me to attend with them. And she was one of three finalists to participate in that. We learned that this is an incredibly rigorous selection process. There were over 100 applications that were received, and they're vetted by two pairs of people, and then they trade off and vet, and that's how they get down to the three finalists and choose a winner. Unfortunately, Bentley wasn't a winner in the School Connect competition, but she's a champion in our eyes, and we just wanted to present her tonight and let you know that she's pretty fantastic. She's one of our promoting eighth graders, and we have high hopes for her, and you'll see her again. Congratulations.
I wanted to point out in the memo from Mrs. Clark, she said bold leadership. Such bold leadership that they changed the whole program for her so that she can make it back for our junior high track meet.
Wow.
So very bold leadership there. Just a second. I just saw in here that it's given to a student who exemplifies great-hearted leadership, cheering on others, leading by example, inspiring her fellow students to generosity, perseverance, and bold leadership, a part to empower the next generation. They fully engage in their education. Cool.
Leading more leaders like that. Yeah. Was it fun? You guys went down together? Was it just?
We met there because we both had to get back to school. But do you want to talk a little bit about the reception?
Yeah, it was, we showed up and it was a all-up result. And we waited outside for a little bit, and some of the sponsors and the lady who is over it talked about it and talked about the purpose of it and pretty much promoting greatness to the next generation. And then we went in, do a little breakfast thing, and they presented the winners. And it was, it was, it was a good experience to see people who were there, even though I wasn't a champion, it was good to see other people who were in, who were carrying that title because of things they had.
We sat, just to give you an idea, there were dignitaries from all over the state, mostly the Valley. I mean, I think that's who kind of sponsored the event. But at our table, we sat with leadership from, I think it was Victoria Unified School District and the, I don't know if he's like the talent manager or the general manager for the Phoenix Rising Club. So, I mean, pretty like, there were a lot of dignitaries in the room. The keynote speaker was a widely known former Newseaker woman in the state who, you know, was talking about just that champion leadership spirit. And it was a really neat organization, I think. We talked a little bit at the end, on the way out at the reception desk with the folks about just recognizing the rural students and how much we appreciate them taking an applicant, you know, taking a nomination and seeing it all the way through and, you know, recognizing that good leadership is not just in Maricopa County. So it was really wonderful. It was a perfect.
Are you going to be involved in the high school student council?
I hope so.
Yeah? Well, congratulations. Can we take a picture? Want to stand? Here, you want to go down?
Let's go down.
Item 3.5, call to the audience. Tyson Adams.
My name's Tyson Adams. I've worked with the district for five years. I work at Sholo High School. I teach English. We have policies, right? Why do we have policies? To keep things running smoothly and in order, I believe. I'm a little disappointed that none of you guys believe in our policies, that none of you guys followed our policies. Our policies aren't followed at our schools. I had a problem. Our staff hasn't been trained on grievance policies, not once. Was I ever told about it? I didn't even have to like resolve a problem that I had within our district. So I tried to go through the chain, and all I got was silence from all of you up there, except for from Lamista and this boy over here, sorry, Mrs. Schultz. And they said, thanks for emailing. The other one said, we're not going to answer you, but Stacy might. But nothing else from any of the rest of you. Do you have emails? Do you know how your emails work? Do you know how to type in a response to somebody who emails you something? That's called being professional and courteous, which none of you have been. A little disappointing from our leadership. Do you hear us? No, you don't hear us. Traitors, disloyalty, cowards, all adjectives. It's nice to know I could, you know, not do my contract and then leave and not have any repercussions. That's all I see from this administration. Break the rules, break your contract, and just walk away. Unless you're a teacher, which case we're going to come after you. Take your license, take your likelihood. If you're an administrator and you lose our district, hundreds of thousands of dollars, break our policies, make people leave, hundreds of qualified teachers, hurt our education, hurt our community, we'll pat you on the back, say thanks, and see you later. If you're a teacher, you're replaceable. There's no money in the budget. There's tons of money in the budget. Don't be ridiculous. Fifteen and a half million dollars is our budget, and you can't run it? You still overspend? Pathetic. Qualified people everywhere on the state, get some, put them in the places. You guys don't care about education? You don't. Don't pretend like you do. You never have. Anyways.
Mrs. Schroder?
Shannon Schroder, also an English teacher at the high school. I emailed the board last week asking if you were aware that when Mr. Housley's proposal was approved, giving returning teachers a 2% raise while raising the base pay for new hires by 10%, it would create situations where returning teachers would be offered contracts at amounts substantially less than new hires with the exact same qualifications and experience. While I did receive replies from three of the board members, no one directly answered my question. Did you know the situation would exist? During the 20% by 2020 raises, pay for those already employed by the district was increased. However, those raises were not added to the base salary at the time, so teachers hired in 2020 and 2021 were hired on a low base salary placement chart. Last year, returning teachers received a $725 raise, and this year, we are being offered a 2% raise. If my calculations are correct, anyone hired in the last two years with experience and education worth less than 30 points is now being offered a contract at an amount lower than a new hire with the exact same experience and qualifications. In my case, I am being offered nearly $3,000 less. In Mr. Housley's PowerPoint presentation, he illustrated a scenario between a new hire and a returning teacher where the returning teacher made $3,400 more due to the sign-on and retention stipends. If I sign the contract that has been offered to me after working here for two years, including the aforementioned stipends, I will make $29.46 more a year than a teacher with the same experience and qualifications hired this year. This means that while my coworkers will receive a true bonus for staying, my stipend will pretty much just make my pay for this year equal to a brand-new hire. And as the years go on and the retention stipends decrease, I will make significantly less every year than the same 2022 hire. It seems like I will be penalized as long as I remain with this district simply because I had the misfortune of bad timing of being hired in between significant raises. Any yearly percentage raises offered will only increase the gap between my pay and that of those who come after me. This gap will carry into my state retirement, which will be based on my average salary. I do not understand how a district expects to retain the teachers that it has while announcing that it will pay more for replacements. You are basically saying that years of experience at another district count for more than years of experience at Sholo. I have been told it is not in the budget to pay those of us in this situation the amounts on the newly approved salary placement chart. However, that doesn't make sense. You cannot predict how much it would cost to replace me. There are 40 possible salaries on that chart, and only three of them are less than the offered contract that you've offered me. You may luck out and pay someone fresh out of college $1,000 less than what you are offering me, or you may hire someone with three fewer years of experience than me, and you'll be paying them $500 more. You may also hire someone with a doctorate and pay them even more. You don't know. You will adjust the budget to include that replacement amount for a new hire. Why then can you not adjust it to keep a returning teacher? Thank you for your time.
Mrs. Stoddard? Are you coming up? Mrs. Stoddard?
My name's Jill Stoddard. I am a parent with students in the district. It's hard to listen to consideration for another finance assistant when so many of our budget issues are the result of mismanagement of funds over the last several years. Our teachers can't be paid salaries they deserve based on Greg Schubert not being properly supervised or evaluated years ago. That went on for years and years, never evaluated or supervised, never held accountable, and then still now no one being held accountable for all that money lost over all those years. Teachers deserve better answers than just, we wish you could pay, we wish we could pay you more, but we can't afford to. Where is the money? Why can money be found to do things that need to be done in this budget, but they can't be found to pay for teachers who are already here? It doesn't make any sense. To respond to a teacher, I wish I could pay you, but I can't, or there's nothing I can do, you might want to look elsewhere, is crazy and illogical. We need to change the policy so that we are a step district. Mr. Housley seems to be proud when he tells teachers, this district is not a step district, meaning we don't automatically give a little raise every year for your experience. Why not? Why don't we pay teachers for their experience and their education? Why do we want grads fresh out of school instead of someone who has 10 years of experience and a master's degree? Think about it and consider changing the policy, or we will continue to lose teachers every year.
Item 3.6, future board agenda items. Anyone have anything?
I have a few things.
Okay.
I'd like to add to our next agenda for us to talk about our grievance policy. I have some ideas of changes that we should be making and recommendations we should be making. And I think we should all talk about it and come up with a plan. It's clearly not working the way it is now. I want us to talk about the grievance policy for both staff and parents slash community, how the policy is communicated, how it's handled, maybe looking into getting some sort of training for those who receive the grievances or concerns or complaints. I think those are things that we should all talk about and come up with a more robust plan moving forward. And then the other thing that I would like on the agenda is some feedback is that what we do on Fridays. It sounds like it was the previous board that made some sort of, set some sort of expectation for how the sites should handle Fridays, and I don't think it's been addressed since I've been on the board. So I think it would be nice to have feedback from the sites as to what's been working well, what, well, first of all, what they've been doing for Fridays, what's been working well and what hasn't, and see if there's anything that we need to change to work better for the different site. So I like that on the agenda as well.
Anything else?
That's all I have for now.
Anyone else?
Well, I just wondered if there was a quorum of us who have concerns of the, like Mrs. Schroder, and I believe we got a couple of other letters as well. Is this something that we want to review as a board? Did we feel kind of like we were doing a good thing last month and maybe we didn't? I don't know. So I wanted to get a feel to see if there's a quorum who would even want to review that, or is that something we're going to do later on in this agenda? I know I had requested that it be put on this agenda, and I wasn't sure if that was going to be part of the discussion of 7.2, which was discussion and approval of salary considerations. So I don't know. I guess I'm asking for that.
I don't think that was on there.
Okay, so is this something, I don't want to appear to be the only one who has a concern, so I want to know if there's a quorum who wants to discuss this. And a future board? I would like to, but, you know, I'm not sure where everybody else is at.
I would be happy to. I believe I voiced my concerns last month with the vote, and I would be happy to revisit it. So.
If we have that discussion, I think we need to have information from Vanessa about what the repercussions would be. So if we did do something about people who were hired on in the last couple of years, we need to know, have the information, how many people that would apply to. We can figure out specifics.
I would agree with you. And last month, we didn't know even how much the, it was going to cost. You know, we were given no numbers. So we kind of, you know, approved it without knowing what the effect to the district would be financially.
This was put in place in, what, 2016 or 2015?
The stepless?
Yeah.
I don't know. It was significantly before I came.
Yeah, it's been a while. It's not a new thing. Okay. Item 4.1, approval of Nicholas Homestead 2023 handbook. Need to know anything?
I'll make a motion to approve Nicholas Homestead 2223 handbook.
Hold on a second.
Go ahead, Lamista.
Hold on a second. On favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion? Opposed? Motion passes. Item 4.2, approval of Sholo High School 2223 handbook.
This is the course outline handbook?
I think I looked really good. Thank you, Mr. Marchant. I'll make motion to approve it as presented.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 4.3, approval of Wood Branch Elementary School Handbook for the 2223 school year.
A motion to approve it as presented.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 4.4, approval of literacy lab. Housley, is that you?
There's an outline in the description contained for you, for your review. This is something that we launched last year. It felt like it was pretty successful, and this is the second phase of that.
Yeah, I'm glad to see it back again.
Me too. I know the teachers really enjoyed being a part of that last year, so I was glad to see it as well. I'd like to make motion to approve as presented.
Hold on a second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 4.5, approval of Kinder Fit and ELL Summer School.
Again, there's a description for you. This is something that we do every year for to get the kinder kids ready to go and stand in line, sit in their seats, and understand just how kindergarten works. It's kind of a fun, fun thing, and the teachers that will be doing that are outlined in the description.
Mr. Housley, I was going to ask you. I noticed that we don't provide transportation for some of those students to attend. Has that created any problems in the past between that and the literacy lab that we just approved? Or is that something that we might look into doing for kids that might have a hard time coming into town?
We did provide some transportation last year. There are some opinions on whether it was successful or not. We did see the actual ridership decrease as the weeks went on, the days went on. So I don't know if it met the extent of success that we would
Or hoping?
That we were hoping for. So certainly continue to review that to see if it's something that we should offer, if it will help with attendance.
I hope so. Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll make motion to approve the, did we already motion? I'll make a motion to approve Kinder Fit and ELL Summer.
Hold on a second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 4.6, approval of teacher evaluation adjustment, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, members of the board, similar to the years in COVID, there's some adjustments, as you locate evaluation systems, to be made. This one is a recommendation from the principals. They've talked back and forth about how this portion should be waived as part of the overall evaluation for this year. Mr. Marchant outlined the reasons for that request in his memo.
I'll make motion to approve the teacher evaluation adjustment as presented.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 5.1, approval of new hires, renewals, and transfers, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, members of the board, there's a number of new hires and transfers in your board docs there. I won't go through all of them, but I do want to point your attention to the MAP-21 explanation. Mr. West has included that is, as far as the new requirements for bus drivers have to meet those requirements. That started this January. We do have a trainer onboard that will help provide some of that training, and so that's reflective in the positions that we're being at or in the summer there.
Are we doing on bus drivers? Do we have enough bus drivers now?
For now.
For now, till the end of the school year?
We do have some applications for next year that are looking to start next year, but the actual requirement in MAP-21 is pretty, a pretty hefty requirement. So we're glad to have a trainer onboard that can train for us.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the new hires, renewals, and transfers.
I'll move to approve the new hires, renewals, and transfers.
I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 5.2, approval of resignations, retirements, and terminations, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, 5.2, inside your board docs for your approval are those staff members who are retiring or resigning their positions in the district.
Once again, I hate to, I say this every month. I hate to see all these people leaving. I want to thank them for their service to the district and wish them well in their future endeavors. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the resignations, retirements, and termination.
Thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 5.3, approval of stipends, volunteers, and event workers, Mr. Housley.
With the summer events coming up and different activities in front of you, summer workers for food service, Spirit Line, summer football, boys soccer, and also you'll find in there, Ms. Alsobrook had brought to our attention her longevity, and so we reviewed that and calculated, so that is, that's captured in this recommendation for your consideration.
I'll make motion to approve the stipends as presented.
On favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, sorry. I need a second. I need a second. Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 5.4, athletic department duty staffing and summer camps. Mr. Keschner, did you want to talk about that?
5.4.
You skipped 5.4.
You said 5.4. The agenda item's different.
The 5.4 is different?
No, you read it different.
You read 5.5. 5.4, there's no 5.4?
I have to refresh.
Oh, yeah, yours is different.
Okay. Okay, what's yours?
So five point four is approval of off contract pay for special education teacher and professional.
Okay, thanks, John. I don't have that on here. So that's five point four, approval of off contract pay for special education teacher and professional.
Madam President, there's a board memo or there's a memo to the board concerning this need, uh, for the summer, for the disposition as for your, your consideration or approval.
I'll make.
I'll motion.
Oh, sorry. I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So, okay, now it's back. Five point five, athletic department duties, staffing and summer camp. Now, did you want to talk, Mr. Cashner?
With that, for the second part, let me give you these right now. I, I was remiss. But let's deal with the athletic department first. And before I go into that, first thing that I've heard since I've been, I've been coming to this mountain probably for eight years in the summer. This is my first year of spending the entire year here. But Sholo wanted to be the number one school on the mountain and a school of the district that everyone can look to. With that being said, um, I just, this particular position because of my relationship with a few people in the district and this is my last give back to children who, uh, have very, been very appreciative of all the time over the years that I've given. But with that being said, for Sholo Athletics to go forward, I propose exactly here in the documentation behind it. I tried to be as thorough as possible. I think a lot of times people don't realize what goes into this particular job, the way it's now structured. And the second page pretty much is a general outline that I compiled over time here. And I'm, if the numbers are incorrect, they're low, not high. So with that being said is to attract anyone, um, the first page, this is what I recommend going forward. When I was on this interview committee and you'll be getting a name tomorrow, that we're going to recommend for this position. We've taken away from this past year, there were three assigned people to help at a rate of $5,000 each, which was probably inadequate, but they all did it and they all did an excellent job. So I'm saying that that probably should, one of those would be removed and added to the head person. Because to attract someone, um, I was very disappointed in the number of applicants. Basically none from outside of the mountain, except for one late applicant due to the cost of living here and the salaries. After, I don't want to go into a lot of detail, but I did homework on every athletic director on the mountain. This particular gentleman would still be the lowest paid, just so you know. As far as in the valley, in three A schools, he'd be near the low fifteen percent. With that being said is you can only do what we have to do. And I understand I've been a teacher a long time, was a principal. And, um, I, I feel the same thing. Teachers are probably underpaid here, but they're underpaid everywhere. And, uh, I'd like to see it addressed, but I have to take care of this department the way it sees. So what I proposed here is that we'd reduce to one being dedicated to the high school and one being dedicated to junior high. As far as those people in the equipment manager position, which I think eventually should become a, as in most districts, a classified full-time position where they would do the, all the repair, all the ordering, all of, all the uniform, helmet reconditioning, baseball sewing pants. But at the current time, I think she was worth her weight in gold. She's now my athletic admin, and so we need to find a new equipment manager. These salaries are going to be, can be supplemented with camp funds to help ensure coverage for all junior high and high school activities during the school year. I asked the board to approve this plan for 2023, hopefully that, uh, we can get the gentleman to sign the contract who we've offered the position to. The second page just outlines everything that I've tried to enlist, what we have done. And, uh, that's in, all those activities include junior high and high school together. The events, the number of students, the number of coaches and staff and the number of buildings. Basically you're a principal without a home. But you're overseeing the same amount, in fact, more students and more facilities. There's some issues with maintenance I think that need to be addressed. You have two governing bodies. Today, for example, I spent, um, two hours at Snowflake dealing with the mountain, mountain league for all our junior high athletics. And there's been a bunch of changes going on in that regard. But then there's, last Monday I was at the AIAA for five hours dealing with the AIAA and their new rules. So there's a lot of organizations and people you have to address. And then we have two principals that have sort of inlined themselves, but still have different regulations coming out of their schools, different eligibilities, and all that has to be managed through that office. So I think the second page pretty much describes what's entailed in the front. And I think we're still underpaying, but it's the best that I could come up with at the time with understand money being tight. I don't want to take money from any teacher. So the way it's been devised, it's using money that's already sort of budgeted for. And to add to that, that's where the second page comes in. The things that I gave you in front is the, I, I was remiss in not having it in the original packet. It was the advertising that we went when we took over the summer camp. So if you turn to the next page, um, it's pretty self-explanatory. I think it's, it was definitely in the best interest of the school district to take over the summer camps and take it away from outside organizations and take the money out of the community in regards to its staffing, in regards to support personnel. So if you look at right now, um, I'm going to go back and forth. But the second page lists the schools that have tentatively committed as of June fifteenth, excuse me, May fifteenth, we're going to get a $50 deposit, which will let us know the exact numbers. We originally set it at May first, but most of the schools, because they were just starting spring practice for football and some of the other sports, they wanted to wait and ask if we could go to May fifteenth and we agreed. That still gives us, after talking to Vanessa and the food services, we needed to have about a month lead time before we would know the exact number and then be prepared for them for meals and, and sleeping arrangements and room assignments and things like that. So with that being said, right now, as you can see, we're expected to have seven hundred and fifty to eleven hundred and twenty-five students here. And, uh, just so you know, what they're paying is, that's with that first that I just handed you now. With, that's the original thing we sent out with the specifications on how much it would be depending on how many days you stay. It looks like right now the average, what I did is take the average, we have some staying four, most staying three, a few staying two, but the average comes out to about three point five days that they're staying with that amount. And then the revenue that would be generated, we're, we would look to spend about fifteen percent on the administrative with, um, being a past business owner, if I could keep my overhead to fifteen percent to run my business, I'm doing great. So with that being said, what we're expecting to pay, if we look down to the bottom, to enhance the athletic director going forward, his range would be eight to 10, depending on how many campers. Camp coordinators would be twenty-five hundred to 5,000, camp supervisors, 1,000 to 3,000, administrative assistant, bookkeeper, which you guys approved a few months ago. That, that money would, for her to go from 10 to 12 months is what I'm talking about. That would be picked up by the summer camp. And then the last is we have some food service staff that is staying after hours beyond their contract. They felt that they needed to be compensated for that time as well. But all of that money would come from depending on the summer camp. The actual district will, the money they'll have in their coffers will be exceed, should be more by about fifteen percent than they've ever received before, with the opportunity to go up by about forty percent. Depending on, one of the things that we're finding is now, um, it was something, an undertaking to advertise to all these schools. I reached out to as many. I know Mr. Hernandez did, um, and we got a few other coaches. But what I'm seeing now is the interest that's this, once they see what we're trying to do. Because we had a meeting with all our staff coaching wise, back before we ever proposed this, asking them to get involved because we would donate a percentage of the amount that the athletic department, to each program, depending on how many students they brought. And then those coaches that would supervise those particular camps, rather than paying someone else to come in and supervise that, they would actually get money for the summer rather than have to go and work somewhere else. They could get money to work at our own camp for our own kids. Our kids can go to those particular things. For example, in football, every night they play a seven-on-seven amongst the kids that are coming. Our kids come to that and get that opportunity for free. That same thing would be true if we, so now what I'm getting from our coaches is, oh, wow, I see it. So I know Ms. Brimwall is actually talking about setting up volleyball camps for next year. So we're going to allocate, which we did this year, allocate certain weeks for certain sports. We don't have a head basketball coach in boys. We don't have a head basketball coach in girls. So that's sort of hurt this a little bit. But I see going forward that we're going to be bringing more people to the mountain, providing more revenue for this community in a lot of ways. Because we have, for example, some of the coaches I've talked to in the valley that would be bringing girl sports up here, whether it be volleyball, girls' basketball or soccer, which is now we're getting a lot of requests about maybe bringing girls and boys soccer up here because those people, people play in the winter, but they're practicing all summer down there in 112. We have something that they can't buy and that's the weather. With that being said is, they asked me if there would be hotels or motels available. Well, you know, that time of year, but they're going to play, but we said yes, we would. At that point in time, when they sign up for the camp, maybe in January or February or March, we'd go ahead and try and get some blocks of rooms where that we could release them later on if they weren't, but hold them. Because the ladies wanted more of a non-camp atmosphere, uh, rather than sleeping in the gym or, or doing whatever. But the interest is there. So I think now that we've took it, taken it over and the advertising that we're doing and the word of mouth is now starting to spread. And I can, I can see it being where we're going to have to turn down schools eventually. Right now, what we've tried to do because of maintenance and talking to food service, we used, they, in the past, they've used Nicholas for a few schools. We are not going to do that this year. We're going to feed and house everybody at the high school. So for this year only, and if you look, there's only an overlap when you look at the dates. There's one period of three days where we have three teams. It still doesn't, it comes to about, and that is if you look at the seventeenth and eighteenth, we have about roughly 200 campers. And then from the eighteenth, excuse me, the 25th through the 27th, um, we have about 200 again. So there's, the most we'd have at one time is between 250 and 300, which we can house at the high school. And they didn't request going to be isolated. Plus it made it a lot easier for Ginger and the food service staff. They can use one cafeteria and we can, we're actually going to, we have a plan. We've already mapped it out. Uh, we're going to block off certain parts of the high school where they're not going to be allowed to go. And to feed them, they're going to go out, the outside, come around to the cafeteria, all on the outside. And so we think we have a plan. We've talked to our maintenance staff and the fields that we're going to have laying. So I think everything's falling in place. Um, I think it's going to be a great revenue producer. My philosophy is that within five years, the athletic department, outside of uniforms, balls and things like that, become more self-sufficient. And some of the things we've done, we still have a couple of things on the books. We're in the process of trying to negotiate a media contract. Um, and then maybe still sell the naming rights to the baseball and softball field. So that there'd be some revenue for the new athletic director to come in and start the school year with. We're already looking at, we've received the first check on the football field part. And we have a check coming over from the, um, Mr. Ellsworth for the padding in the gym. So I'd like him to start with about $20,000 every year, which is not budgeted money. It's money that we brought in as the athletic department. Because in the beginning, there are a lot of times there's things that fall through the cracks and all of a sudden we need some money. If they're not budgeted for, it would be nice for us to have this money set aside, uh, that we've pretty much generated by doing things a little differently. So ask your questions regarding, let's start, start with the, is there any questions on the, uh, athletic department? The structure or the responsibilities?
Mr., uh, so, uh, Cashner, when we look at the, uh, going from, uh, three assistant directors down to two, are there, is there currently three people employed in those positions or?
Yes, sir.
And are, have you talked to those three people and are they okay with somebody removing that stipend and?
Well, um, yes, in that I'm not going to say they'd be removed because one of them is not going to do it. So the other two, which one of the things, again, I'm going to leave up to the new person. One of the things that when we first had the two, which were Mr. Reed and, uh, Mr. Frost.
Yeah.
My concern was we didn't have a female. And I'm not going to go into a girl's locker room if there's an issue with, we've had some instances, actually, we had to call the police where a, a, a girl assaulted her coach from another team. And we had to call the police and have her arrested, taken off the bus. I wasn't going to get involved. Laura Lars did that part. So my recommendation is, I'm not going to tell a moot hire, but that one of those two people would be a female. The other thing that I felt was that, uh, to support Mrs. Clark more, someone should be housed there. We were rotating. My idea in the beginning was to take all three and let them experience both high school and junior high athletics, coaches, students, and get that experience. After doing that, now this is evaluation after a year, that I feel that we need someone there probably more full-time, that would be able to answer parents' questions or open locker rooms at times, help her with transportation and doing some other things. But that, but again, I'm not going to tell someone else how to run their department. But that's the recommendation there would be too. I think the equipment person is, is, is vital. Most other districts told me they were worth their weight in gold. We, we just have to value that position and what they can do and the responsibilities they're given. But to answer your question, um, two of those people had applied for this position. I met with both of those today to tell them what our decision's going to be and they were, they were, they were fine. And I don't, I, and then I had some personal conversations with them both, telling them what I thought is part of the deciding factor. And I, and I'm not talking behind anyone's back. But to me, in this position, it would be hard to have a supervisor that hasn't been in a head coaching position and supervising head coaches at all levels, unless you've already done it, experienced it. I mean, there's no way I could have ever been a principal without being a teacher. There's no way I, I, I could have even been a, a principal without being an assistant principal. You had to sort of live it to understand the, the problems and, and what teachers go through and have some compassion for them at certain, different times. So, uh, to me, I think that's one of the things that the person we've selected has been a head coach a couple of times and, uh, going forward. So I think that was correct. I, I really believe that, um, this mountain has so much to offer, but there's so many restrictions right now. Everybody I talked to, I tried to recruit and they looked at what they were making there. And it was, they were going to take a cut. Plus then they looked at housing and a lot of these people come up here for the summer. It's not like I'm, I can surprise them and say, no, it's not really like that. But, uh, in fact, one of the gentlemen has an aunt that lives at Torian. And he called his aunt and then called me and she was telling him what the houses were going for. And, uh, he said, like, there's no way. So I mean, I think that's what you've heard a lot today coming from teachers as well. I mean, I know everybody's looking for staff members and it's hard to attract. And I'm just trying to make it as. I know everybody's looking for staff members and it's hard to attract and I'm just trying to make it as it's, and I met with Vanessa two or three times. I tried to pull something that was not going to be a surprise to her budget-wise, and I don't think any of this is. And how we could help fund that. And that's where the summer camps, I see that being a revenue and maybe this media contract and some other things that uh, selling, um, I don't want to get the cart before the horse, but we bought some seating that can, we can now sell as reserve seating with backs on them that we put into football. So the new athletic director can sell those things at a higher price and generate some more revenue. A LED board for the best, so we can sell advertisements on that. So putting some things in place where that the athletic department can generate funds. So we're not having to go always ask for money that we know is not there.
Any other question? Thank you, Mr. Cashner.
Enjoy your retirement.
I'll entertain a motion to approve athletic department duty staffing in summer camp.
I just want to say congratulations on your recent.
All things.
Can we afford this? Vanessa.
So with the, because I've talked with Mr. Cashner at length about affordability and what we could do to be creative. The athletic um, department is unique in that they generate revenue. And he's put a lot, a lot of work into these camps. Um, I'm optimistic that the camps will pay for these things that he's asking for. But as he mentioned, the, the numbers, and I think there's all the teams that he has set up. We're not going to have, I think they all have the preliminary paperwork. We're not going to have the actual commitment to come until the fifteenth. We're anticipating them following through, but if for some reason a significant portion did not, then we would have to discuss what we're going to do. But um, he's done a lot, a lot of work. Um, the most, a lot of the teams on here are repeat. They have come in previous years. So I can't anticipate that they wouldn't, but um, we don't have those numbers set in stone until the fifteenth. But if they do follow through, um, and like he mentioned, the income range here. Just off these ones here, not allowing for future growth is between a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, which would basically allow them to self-fund um, a lot of these things that they're asking for.
And that, those numbers are net, they're not gross, correct?
Um, those are projections, um, yeah, gross projections.
Gross, okay.
Mr. Cashner, if, if some of these people or some of these teams don't, if they bail, do you have people in waiting that would take these spots or?
No, at this time, no, but what I try to do, I always try to be on the conservative side. That's why I kept the uh, management cost at fifteen percent or less. It's actually twelve point nine percent of what we anticipate the revenue being so lost. If you would definitely be able to handle what we've included in this. What it wouldn't do is maybe provide more money, part of the assets would go to the school. In the past, uh, the district, when they were taking, getting money from an outside source. They would give like to Nicholas, if Nicholas has one or two teams, it would give them X amount per student athlete. Where now we're going to have it at the high school. So maybe instead of giving Mr. Marchant in the, this particular year, ten dollars per student because we're using his facility almost like rent that goes to upgrade that facility. We might have to cut it back five or four dollars, but it's still more than what he's been getting. And so I don't anticipate us going in the hole at all. It's just that how much profit are we willing? You know, going to make. And I, like I said, I only see it, I only see it going up because of the enthusiasm that it started to generate in home calls from other sports.
So what are your plans if some of these do bail on that to fill those spots? Or, or if they bail, it's over, it's done, we can't fill a spot?
Well, that, in some cases, we have multiple teams that are weak. But as of now, by now, I think we would have gotten them if they bailed. What we're looking for is on the fifteenth, they have to commit. And that's why we wanted to wait till they had chances like our particular team has been practicing now for two weeks. Now they're going to go and we've reached out to every one of these. They reach out to their booster clubs. What we're asking them to do is send us fifty dollars to guarantee that it's non-refundable. So if they're sending it for a hundred kids and they only bring ninety, you know, we're not losing out as far as we're get, we have the fifty dollars. So it's a non-refundable deposit.
Per, per student, per athlete?
Yes, not per school, per student.
We have found as we've done these over the past, even though we had a third-party provider, attrition of athlete has been very low. There hasn't been a, once they're committed, they're pretty much committed.
To be clear, when he said Mr. Marchant, he was meaning the high school. Yeah. Just to be, just to be clear. I'm sorry, man.
The fifteenth, just as far as timeline goes, um, is this coming Sunday. So I don't know if the board can make it in a decision contingent on this.
We wanted to give enough time and I, I think the fifteenth, the first, when we looked at it, we realized uh, and after coaches called us, we're, we wanted them to have a chance to be with their kids. In fact, we think the numbers will go up now rather than it go down because they're getting more kids, just like we went out, we anticipate for spring practice thirty-five, forty, I think it was the other day, a hundred and fifty-seven that are out there. So you know, they're getting more and more and the opportunity, I'll be honest, the deal is that these coaches, when I talk to them, they're taking our number and increasing it. So most of the schools that are coming here are charging two hundred and fifty dollars. And what they do with that extra money, just for your, I asked, so why? Well, we pay for our coaches to come for a week. We buy our kids shorts and t-shirts for the summer camp. It's just a more of an incentive for them to go away. Plus a lot of these kids have never been outside of their area in Phoenix or anywhere else. And now they're going to take them to the mountain. You saw what we included. One of the things I tried to push is the community itself. What are their activities outside of football or our year? I mean, other than the weather with these kids, well, you know, we have a bunch that love to fish. We talked about the lakes, we talked about uh, and that's one of the things that I think a lot of these coaches like that providing some other activities. Talked to the city about using the swimming pool, doing some other things that it's just not, it's actually going to camp. Plus the, what biggest thing is the team, the camaraderie, the leadership. You know, building a team atmosphere is what they all want. They, they love the camp, the idea of spending a couple nights in the gym on the floor and sleeping bags. I mean, it's not the worst camping experience, but uh, you know, some of these kids are so used to hotels and stuff like that.
You guys want to take action or do you want to table it?
I would motion to approve as presented.
Okay, I have a second, a second. All in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion passes. Item six point one, approval of proposed issues and considerations for the twenty twenty-three political agenda. Do you guys have a time to look at that?
Yeah, we want to open the agenda part. We can do six, right?
That's the one.
The middle one?
Yeah. How many do we choose? They say I don't remember.
Is it six?
It's five and two alternates.
And do we choose the main, the main heading or the little bullet points?
These are just this year's, so we pick our own. And so far this year, we haven't achieved any of these goals from last, from this last year. So up to seven.
I think adequately and equitably fund district schools to at least the national median for people funding is eminently reasonable and should continue to be number one goal.
Number one?
Yes.
I'd agree.
Yeah, I agree.
How about improve outcomes for all students?
Yeah.
Do that for two?
Yes, that'd be great.
Preserve and strengthen local control?
Yeah, for three.
Yeah.
About.
We have to do six?
No, but we can do smaller ones like fully fund kindergarten could be one.
Yes.
You guys okay with that?
Yes.
Or? And um, special education funding, the weight needs to be improved. So that could be five. What other one did we miss? I think. I know.
Um, the one under improve outcomes for all students about the state standardized testing.
I'll put that one on there.
Yeah.
Which one do we put for number four? Kindergarten, right?
Yeah.
What do you want to do with?
There's one here that addresses.
Standardized, what about?
Student mental health.
Oh, yeah. Want to do that for six, student mental health?
Yes. Yeah.
That says uh, student mental health and well-being initiative.
Okay.
Accompanying with safety.
What was the, what was the student achievement one that you said, Lamista? That'd be seven.
Um, it was under, right there, under improve outcomes for all students. State standardized testing shall not be used for any purpose other than a year over your measurement of student growth in this said subject. Rethink and redefine the role and purpose of standardized testing and develop meaningful assessments and other measurable outcomes. There's too much testing.
Okay.
Stop making us do stuff. Just let us teach the kids.
So we have seven. These are good with all seven of those?
Yep.
Okay, we'll turn them into Virginia and she can submit them.
Thank you.
We need to prove them. Okay. You guys make a motion to approve those seven?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Item seven point one, approval of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two may budget revision Mississippi.
Um, so this is just the final wrap-up for this school year's budget. There's a required May revision. So I'll just go over some of the highlights for this year. As we discussed and everyone is aware, the, our district anticipated and projected the two percent growth and then recapturing the five percent that was lost during COVID. Which we were able to do so. So um, was that fiscal twenty-two was just a two percent increase? I'm sorry. So the previous fiscal twenty-one included the recapture. Um, so we'll just go over the, the budget limits, uh, talk about next year's numbers and some pending legislative decisions that will affect schools. So in essence, we projected the two percent growth. We achieved the two percent growth. And that affects directly our M and O budget. Which with everything um, considered was a little over eighteen million dollars. The district, we did have carryover of almost one point four million, which is included in that number. So that is, the, the one point four million is included in that number. The goal, just to reiterate, is to have a twenty-five percent uh, in M and O reserves, which for our district uh, is approximately four million dollars uh, to weather an economic downturn, downturn or a budget cut. Like the AEL, which was looming over our head most of the year. It's still going to be a factor for this coming fiscal year, unfortunately. So it's something that we need to keep in the back of our mind. Um, so based on that, with the reserve that we have, that puts us at thirty-four percent of our goal. So we are making progress to have that in reserve. So the long-term goal, um, in talking to a lot of other business managers and people that have been doing this a long, long time and looking at our data and, you know, what can we be doing to strategize and put our district in a good, an optimal position financially? Is to make sure that you hit your reserve. Once you hit the four million dollars, um, then you can go ahead and budget to capacity. So our district has kind of been doing that in reverse. We've been budgeting to capacity without any reserve. So it's just, we do have to get that reserve in place and I think it's important. Um, I know there was a lot of discussion over um, carrying over that much money. We could have used it for, you know, raises. We could have used it for this. We could have used it for that, which we well could have. But in planning for the district and long-term success for our financial goals, it's very important to set the money aside. It's in reserve typical or similar to your own personal savings. It's in savings, you know, for emergencies um, and things that you need to address that come up that you weren't planning on. So that's kind of the same. That made sense to me in the translation from some of the consultants and what they're saying. We do have to have a district savings to be able to, inflation's going higher and higher and higher. It's, it's eating up a lot of our power of buying, uh, or buying power, you know, for supplies and food and other things. So that, that is the goal. We are making progress. If we can get to the twenty-five percent, that would be really exciting to be able to budget to capacity. We, we could have a lot of, um, a lot of room there to do really good things. So that's the recap on M and O uh, for capital. Our district really, really, the facilities need some attention. Capital is always the first thing because they're not tied to salaries and benefits, the first thing that is cut or put on hold or and so the majority of the money was held in reserve pending the aggregate expenditure limit. Not knowing what, if we had to pay the three million dollars or revise down, I didn't want to spend a lot of that money. And then have to cut elsewhere. So a lot of the money was held in reserve pending that. With that said, um, since that decision, we've gone ahead and ordered the food service equipment. So our fridges, the freezers. Just the, the equipment that they're using is very out of date. Um, a lot of it is, is failing. The SFB has stepped in on a few projects. But they're not going to step in on all projects. So we've tried to put a, a few of those in motion. We've, a lot of the, because the, the sites get their own capital budget, a lot of um, feature, you know, furniture, um, stuff is, was ordered on a small scale. I'm hoping to improve that. Next year, um, a big thing that came up was just new computers for the front office staff, for the secretaries. At some of these sites, they haven't had a new computer in, I don't know how long, like they're not functioning. Some of them are trying to work on laptops. So that's something that we went ahead uh, and then trying to rotate the new copiers. We did go ahead and put in motion uh, orders for the Nicholas Homestead Linden Elementary and the junior high. And then we will rotate that every year on who's, who's next to receive an upgrade. Um, it's very difficult on some of these items because with um, just the economy and items coming in for electronics and things like that, a lot of it, you can't get the items. So there's back orders. Um, hopefully that starts to ease up, but um, a lot of it just has a long lead time. You may want it, but you're not going to get it real fast. So in cooperation with the capital needs assessment, there was a committee, did a lot of work. I'm not sure, were you going to speak to some of that? Are they here?
Just briefly, I'm going to, they're going to present to you later in the month or in first part of June. Um, but they've, they did all the assessment. They also have the safety needs assessment. They prioritize the budget over five years. Um, they've outlined every expenditure that was, that it should be. There's still some work that they wanted, they want to continue the committee through next year as an advisory. But they also are still looking at some project costs. But right now, when we met last Wednesday, they were really excited because every year um, Vanessa gave them kind of a target budget for capital expenditures annually. And they were significantly under that and could capture every, every need that was found in the capital needs assessment. and they were significantly under that and could capture every, every need that was found in the capital needs assessment. So I'll, I'll let them share all that, the details with you, but just for that to be said, that they were excited about the ability to address some of these needs on an annual basis and continue to look for other needs.
And just one of the items that is in process, I think it's, it was on, it was discussed in committee, but it is in progress. We do have the purchase order in place to upgrade the district auditorium lighting. We were hoping for, you know, before the play, it's been several months and there's still not an ETA on the equipment. So we're kind of.
And how is that being funded?
That is coming from the community service fund.
Oh, great, okay, good.
So that was just one of the things in talking with the auditors that we could use the money for because the community uses the auditorium. It's kind of, well, it's very limited on what that can be used for. So there, hopefully over the summer, it's done, pending delivery of a lot of those electronic components.
Is it just the lighting or the sound too?
It's all the sound and lighting. And a complete refresh in the control booth.
Oh, good.
With like touchscreen.
Nice.
So it'll be very nice, long overdue.
Will be someone who knows how to use it?
Yeah, they're going to come and do training. They're going to come and do training.
You would volunteer?
No. They, they are going to come, it's Jewel over at Clear Wing, we worked with her before on doing the rigging and stuff. She's going to come out and do a complete training with the new equipment, and it's a lot more user-friendly, so.
And the ETAs over the summer?
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
They, they, I've tried to pinpoint and nail her down to like, give me a side of a timeframe and a lot of those electronic components are coming from overseas, so there's not one sudden, but that is in process, so. A lot of the things you're going to see on the capital needs, and I'll let them speak to that, is our facilities. They need attention and, and some major upgrades, so that's capital.
I, you know, oftentimes, well, sometimes I should say, will get comments, you know, that they need new desks. You know, like this program will need new desks or this classroom. Is there like a contingency fund that can help out with those immediate needs?
So I think they ranked them all in order of immediacy or priority. Like I said, each of the sites does receive their own capital budget and they did, we ordered several, I wouldn't say numerous, but we ordered several classroom, you know, new desks and chairs and that. So I'm trying, I'm going to try to bump that number up for next year. It's just, it's a little, it's a little bit of a, we have to be cautious still because we have the aggregate expenditure limit. Yeah, we have to be cautious, but we still, I, I do want to pump the money into the things that we actually.
Well, that would be considered a need, it's not a want, you know? So hopefully we can come up with some kind of contingency fund to help out with those, those immediate needs, you know?
Yeah, so I think when they do the capital needs assessment, you'll see that they prioritize tons of things, painting, hallways, all those sorts of things. So just to preview kind of what's coming for next year's budget, classroom site fund is going to drop a little, but stay extraordinarily high at seven oh eight. And then ASRS amazingly are going to drop those percentages, those rates a little, so those, all staff should see a little bump in their pay. Little bit on that, and then some of these pending legislative decisions, they're still deciding the base level. They're still deciding the district additional assistance, which is capital. Special education hopefully gets another look, and they really give some extra consideration on that because it's not enough. Full day kindergarten, that's one thing that our district does fund that's not reimbursed by the state. So they're looking at some consideration for that. Transportation, they're looking to totally revamp and take away the multiplier for mileage. If they were to do that, we would probably see a reduction. Round Valley is estimating they'll lose about three hundred thousand. And they're a lot smaller, well, I wouldn't say smaller, but like mileage-wise, I would anticipate ours would be higher than that. So I'm going to do a little bit more on that projection to see, but that's something that's pending. And then the option with ASRS, they're going to do some stuff and allow for some discounts on pre-funding. I don't know that we would be in a position to pre-fund ASRS, that's a lot of money. But something that they're, they're putting out there that's optional for district. Did you want to add anything on the pending legislation?
No, there's just, I think she captured all the, the factors in there, the change in the new funding structure, structure. Some districts will stay on the existing structure, some will be moving, so you'll see different school districts even around us perhaps beyond different funding mechanisms moving forward based on those changes in legislation. One thing that is a component of that change is the ability not, you can't bond or you can't go for M and O override. You, you, the community would have to approve a seventy cent for a hundred thousand in valuation increase in order to move to the new funding mechanism. It would deplete transportation funding, it would deplete a few other things, but it would fund the district at a little higher level. But there's, there's factors, there's pros and cons to, to both ways, and some districts will be, will be moving to the other one and some will be staying on the current funding mechanism. So it's just something we, we have to weigh out as we move.
And we wouldn't qualify right now, right? Because we have a bond.
One of the disqualifiers would be if you have a bond or an override in place that you couldn't apply to be in that funding source. And we do have a bond in place for a few more years.
Yeah. So that's just pending. Here's some timeframes with the legislation. The proposed budget I will bring back in June for fiscal twenty-three, will adopt it in July. The legislative session is still going into June, and then they're expecting to have those forms available for us, for me, at the end of May. So they don't make it easy on some of those, but they're still deciding sometimes up to the very last day, so. Hopefully some good things come out for education. There's a lot on the table being discussed. And that's it. If you guys have any questions, like I said, to reiterate, for the projection, we, and we projected the two percent growth. We did get the two percent growth. I do anticipate being under budget roughly between three and five hundred thousand dollars. That would just go to the reserve and put us a little closer, not quite to the two million mark. And that's not even reserving ten percent of the budget, so.
Thank you.
All motion, we approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item seven point two, discussion and approval of salary considerations for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Mr. Hoesley.
Madam President, Ms. Beecroft can also weigh in on this if she, she would like, vote in front of you this evening as a consideration to a classification of employees that we, we got them approved for hire, but we did not approve a, an increase moving forward. So this will address all certified personnel who are working directly with students outside of administration. So we have in front of your memo there, just want to explain to high school counselors, for example, there have been a need for three for, since I came and before Farrell, Mr. Adams was trying to hire a third and, and could hardly get applications, couldn't get that position filled. So they've always had a stipend for caseload as they, they split that caseload in half. So what you see in the proposal is to take that caseload amount. We're not going to look for a third counselor at the high school, take that caseload amount, put it into their regular salary, so it's just consistent there. That puts them in line with the grant-funded counselors and then as far as their base salary is concerned. And then increase two percent just as, as given to the teaching staff. Mental health counselors, the same two percent. School psychologists, the same two percent. SLPA, we have one, same two percent. An academic advisor, we have one, that would be a two percent also. Those are the considerations for this evening that are contained in this recommendation. One thing, just to, I know the question is on your mind, what about the, the other staff? The, the, you know, a hundred and fifty classified staff members that we have and the, the others. We anticipate that unfortunately or fortunately, however you look at it, minimum wage is going to continue to go up based on cost of living increases. That's anticipated to go from twelve eighty to thirteen fifty. So as that continues, without additional funding being granted to schools to take care of that. So that's going to be an impact on, in January, January first is when that takes effect annually. And so we anticipate some of that affecting some of our, our classified staff members. Unfortunately, that's, it just gobbles up positions year after year in, into that realm as we continue to grow in minimum wage. The other piece is, you know, we have some things that we're still trying to, Ms. Beecroft outlined a few things that we're waiting on to know a little bit more about. One of those things is we have a meeting with the auditor coming up here shortly to kind of outline what the implications are of our audit. So once we have those things come into a more clear picture, there could be other additional recommendations moving forward. But as of right now with our current, current picture, this is where we, we can move forward continually.
And all of these staff members have been just, have been talked to regarding this recommendation? They're all aware of this?
Have each of them?
I reached out to all of them.
And the response?
Are you like principals? I was talking about counselors, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I moved, I was talking about everybody who were not recommending a race. Have they been talked to?
The question in the administrative meeting a couple of weeks ago was, would there be, did we anticipate something? I said at this moment we couldn't, but in, just as I shared with you, should things flush out where there's additional information where we could, then we would anticipate something similar to the rest of this stuff.
Do you think we, I mean, do you think this is something we need to move on right now? Because we don't know what we're going to get from the state? I just need to do something like this and, you know? And then later on, we might be able to add to it, but if we could wait a few weeks and then add to it, maybe that would be better, you know? Be stalling, I know.
Last year we added the addendum, I believe it was in June, if I remember right. A little bit later, after the legislature finished their, their session, we added that addendum to administrative contract. So that is something that is, is available, but your consideration.
All motion, we approve seven point two as outlined.
There a second? I mean, I guess I, I want to see the increases that are there and hopefully we can come up with more increases later. But I don't want to not give the increases now that we can, just in hopes that we could give more. So hopefully if we can give more, we can still address that later, and I'd rather not, not give what we can now. So I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item seven point three, fiscal year twenty-three IGA between the CED and NAVIT, Mr. Hoesley.
Do you have anything that you want to add to that, Ms. Beecroft? This is our normal annual IGA with NAVIT, be able to offer our satellite programs at our site.
I'll make motion to approve the NAVIT agreement as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Items eight point one through eight point nine, consent agenda, Mrs. Beecroft.
So for your review and approval, we have eight point one, the ratification of all the expense vouchers for the month of April. We have eight point two, the ratification of all payroll vouchers. Eight point three, approval of overnight and out-of-state travel. Eight point four, approval of substitutes. Eight point five, approval of the PTSO and Booster Club financials. Eight point six, approval of tax credit and activity account. Eight point seven, approval of fundraisers. Eight point eight, approval of the governing board, combined special public meetings, May second, May third and April fourteenth, April twenty-second and April twenty-seventh. And then eight point nine, approval of donations. Mr. Clark wants to share that.
Sure, I think we have received donation in the amount of three hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents from Allegra for printing our tickets for graduation. So we'd like to thank Clyde Moses and his team over there. I do have one question about this. On eight point three, there's two requests from Mr. Brogan to go on a basketball, overnight basketball camp. So I'm wondering if those requests are still in effect with Mr. Brogan leaving the district.
I believe that the supervising person would be the assistant coach, who was Christie Francis, and I believe she's still, is anticipating going.
Okay. With that, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moves.
Meeting adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned.